I would call to order the Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, regular meeting of the Village Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. Can you have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Simpson?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson's here. Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Donahue is absent. Chairperson Carmichael.
Here. We have a forum. Would everyone rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as long as everyone's standing, whoever testifies must be sworn in. So if you're going to testify, please raise your right hand to swear that any and all statements that you make to this commission be the complete truth.
I do.
Thank you. Also, another reminder, anyone who testifies has to be signed in. We have a sign-in sheet out in the hallway and up here, name and contact information. Next item is approval of minutes from our October 8th, 2025, regular meeting. Chair of all have reviewed those minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Simpson?
Second.
Thomas? Motion and a second. You have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. And before we get started, I'll quickly review public hearing procedures. First, the applicant comes forward and introduces himself, herself, and presents their petition. That's followed by staff comments. We have Scott here representing the village staff tonight. And then the public gets to come to the podium and weigh in and again, making comments to the commission, not to the individuals in the room. We have the village attorney here to straighten us up on any questions that might arise. And finally, the commissioners then get to discuss, ask questions, and hopefully get to a vote. A reminder that the vote from this commission is recommending only. The village board has the final say-so in all of these issues. Any questions? Okay, next item. Under old business, we have a public hearing, PCC 0172025, a request from JARE Enterprises, limited liability corporation doing businesses as Lit Smokes, the petitioner, and WL Property Acquisitions LLC, the owner, for the property at 101 West Ogden for the following. A special use permit request for a tobacco and vape shop retail store in the B2 General Business District. Good evening.
Good evening, you guys. How are you, Commissioner and Chief? How's it going? All right. So yeah, I want to request a...
Give your name to the...
Oh, yeah. First name is Ahmad, last name is Judah, 101 West Ogden, Unit B, next to Starbucks. So I want to ask for a special use permit for a tobacco and vape store that we feel that goes, that would go perfectly adjacent next to the dispensary so we can carry more variety of products like, you know, glass and tobacco items. And if there's any questions, you guys can ask me. I'm ready for you.
All right. Staff comments, please.
Thank you, Chair. So before I get into the specifics of the request, I just want to note that for this item, we're using the previous zoning ordinance before it was amended in August because of when they submitted an application. So you'll see a reference through here, Appendix A throughout the staff report. The new amended zoning ordinance is Chapter 95. So when you look at the regulations, we're using the Appendix A regulations. Under Section 1.13, transitional provisions allows us to do so because of when they made application. There's not real, there's not a ton of change between the request and the old code or in the amended code and the current regulations. It's more of a just formality of when they submitted documents. So as AJ mentioned, they're requesting a special use permit to operate tobacco and vape retail store in the B2 General Business District. Some background on the item, because you've met AJ before here, when he went through the Starbucks special use request for cannabis dispensary and the ancillary request for the site and landscape plan approval, as well as a final preliminary plan for their consolidation of properties. So you might notice that the property currently is improved from when he came in for that request. Additionally, with that request, there was a drive-through that was being requested for a bakery to serve hemp-related products through the bakery. They received difficulty in obtaining non-village agency approvals at the Health Department for their menu. They ultimately weren't able to operate that specific business. So to utilize a space, they are now requesting that the unit be used for tobacco and vape-related retail store specific to that unit. The plan on keeping the drive-through open to sell non-tobacco and vape products through it, those are your paraphernalia and other items that can be sold through it. The specifics to their request tonight, so the drive-through was approved with the bakery, so we have a drive-through special use on record. And then the new use, the tobacco and vape retail, required a special use permit to operate and also a license through the village at a later time. So in Appendix A, it's Section 7.03A, 125B, that dictates the special use requirement. And in that requirement, there's also a location condition. And that location condition relates to distance from schools, not daycares or nurseries, just schools. It has to be 1,000 feet away from a school. So they are 1,035 feet away from Miller School to the south. So they do meet that condition. Additionally, some of the operations for the facility that AJ provided in his documents that are also in the staff report include that the operating hours will be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM to match the existing hours for the dispensary on-site. They anticipate three to five employees to serve the business daily. They will be selling, like I said, tobacco and vape products inside the store to ensure ID verification, so no tobacco or vape products should be sold through the drive-through. And then related to the site plan, because it is a new use, we have to look at parking. So getting to some of the specifics for parking, the existing cannabis dispensary requires about six parking stalls at a one per 400 square foot requirement. The tobacco and vape retail store requires three parking spaces at one per 250 square feet. So the total requirement's nine spaces that are required. This site has about 35 parking spaces, which satisfies the parking requirement for the site, for this use in particular. As noted, we're utilizing the previous special use standards that are listed in your staff report at the end of the staff report. I'm happy to go through each one if need be, but other than that, I'm here for questions from the commission. You should all have a floor plan, a proposed floor plan for the tobacco and retail in your packet.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to come forward and address the commission on this? Seeing no one, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Lynn, would you like to start?
Scott, if you could tell me, so there's not necessarily a problem or catch for the code, it's just that it's a special use? Is that...
Yeah, so the request is just a special use, similar to, it's in the amended zoning ordinance, which was just adopted in August, it is also a special use with the same requirements. It just has, when they made application, it was under the previous enacted code, which had tweaks to the special use standards. So in lieu of them providing a whole new response list to the special use standards, we opted to just forward it with the responses they provided previously.
Is there cannabis being sold through the drive-through?
No. I don't know. No. That's just going to be tobacco. Not tobacco products, but non-tobacco products if we would sell anything.
Can you give me an example of a non-cannabis, non...
T-shirt, hats, a soda, anything like that.
Through the drive-through?
Yeah.
But is there, I can understand it's not under this meeting, but is there enforcement of that thing?
Through the drive-through? If a special condition's put on the special use permit, you can require that, I believe. They also, there's a separate licensing product for tobacco products and sale of them, and they usually, the village does sweeps of those properties to verify that they're meeting the restrictions. I don't believe there's a specific restriction for drive-through and tobacco products not be sold like through the state or anything like that, but our attorney is here who can answer that.
I did not research that issue. I'm not aware of any restriction on drive-through tobacco nicotine products being sold by the state. And the intention is, I'm sorry, I missed that. The intention is to sell or not sell?
Not sell tobacco. I mean, if anybody's going to come up to the drive-through and buy a tobacco item, we would tell them, we would deny it and tell them to come into the store and show proof of ID at the POS station.
Well, if there's a voluntary agreement, then we can put it as a special condition on the special use approval.
I mean, I'm not too sure myself, like how to go about that. So if that's something...
I don't know. I can't speak.
Underage sales are a concern. They're an issue that the village frequently encounters and why the village does these things. I think it's harder to tell someone's age even with an ID through a drive-through.
Yeah.
And we've got an applicant who says they're not intending to have tobacco sales or vape sales through the drive-through, so we can, I can make sure that's in the ordinance as a condition.
Yeah. I just had, I think where I grew up, I just remember there was a convenience store that had a drive-through, and it was just like a 7-Eleven, it wasn't 7-Eleven, but it was just a convenience store.
Yeah.
And it had a drive-through, and I think they got, they got in trouble because they were, they were selling alcohol through the, through the drive-through window. And I could kind of, just from that, I would imagine that there's got to be, I would imagine that, and I'm not, I'm not accusing you at all, you seem like a very respectful guy. But I'm guessing that there is already, like, there's probably state rules and things to say that you can't sell either cannabis or alcohol through a drive-through, I would imagine.
Yeah, I know 100% on the cannabis side you can't. On tobacco, I'm not really sure, but I mean, I come from a deep percent of cannabis, and we got stricter, way stricter guidelines and more through inspections weekly. We will not, we won't, we won't enforce the same guidelines. On the tobacco side, we won't use the drive-through for anything that has to be 21 or older. Yeah.
Thank you. Those are, those are the only concerns that come to my mind.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Commissioner Simpson?
Oh, can I chime in?
Yeah, of course.
According to the internet, you can't sell tobacco through a drive-through.
No, there you go. Yeah, we weren't, we weren't intending to as well, so.
So here's, here's my question. Is, and Scott, maybe you can help me out here. Is the special use to have the second business on-site, or is the special use for the drive-through portion?
So the drive-through was approved through the bakery use that was previously proposed on the site when, in conjunction with the dispensary use.
Sure.
It's pretty convoluted because they're attempting to do hemp sales, hemp-infused products, which aren't regulated by the state, they're federal laws.
Sure.
And usually the village just can't get involved with those.
Sure.
The Health Department said, "We can't approve your menu because of the hemp-related products that are infused." So they're instead proposing the tobacco and vape retail in the same unit that the baker was proposing. It was always going to be a two-unit building, though.
Okay.
There's a separate unit for the dispensary, they have security for that side that's required by the state.
Okay. So effectively, when they got approved in the beginning, it's, they're not following what, not, they're not, not following, that's not the business model they're going for going forward. It's changed.
Correct.
As a result of non-Westmont-related, but the state-regulated issues?
Yes.
Or lack thereof, I should say.
Yeah. Health Department.
So here's where, like, for me personally, where it's kind of just drawing a little bit of a problem. You require sale of tobacco or cannabis to be on-site in the building at...
Well, not cannabis. That's a different business.
Yeah, these are separate businesses.
But to purchase it, they have to go inside to Starbucks, correct?
They're separate.
Are you talking about cannabis?
Well, I'm just trying to understand. There's two businesses on this site, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding that if you want to purchase tobacco or cannabis, you'd have to go inside...
They're different entrances, they're different businesses.
Yeah.
Jay, would you explain that?
Well, just real clear. Cannabis is not at issue tonight.
Sure.
That's already been approved.
Sure.
They have a separate, it's a separate business, separate separation walls, separate entrance. So the only questions that I think are really relevant are, for tobacco sales, do you have to go inside the entrance to this store that's on the agenda tonight to purchase tobacco products? If that's what you're getting at?
Yeah, I just want to, like, what I'm expressing some pessimism on is that the only thing that's legally going to be sold through this drive-through would be lighters, t-shirts, or sodas, but the actual item that you would really need a license from the village or the state for, like tobacco or cannabis for the other one, we could ignore cannabis, but tobacco, is only occurring inside. So effectively, you can only basically get lighters, drinks, or t-shirts, but it's called Lit Smokes, right?
Correct.
Is the business still able to operate without the drive-through? Like, what I'm trying to figure out is, is this a placeholder until we're expecting the Springfield to do something on hemp, and there's a particular reason or something that I'm missing? Or is this genuinely we, you anticipate...
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not doing hemp at all. I mean, hemp is old business.
Sure.
That was supposed to be in the bakery, but the county, county or the Health Department didn't approve it, so we went away with that. We're doing tobacco now, tobacco sales only.
Sure.
That drive-through is, I think, would be good for, you know, just convenience of, you know, if anybody wants to come in and get, like I said, a pop, a lighter, any kind of, you know, apparel, anything like that, we can, we can utilize. But anything tobacco, you need to come into the store. The dispensary is a unit, is a suite A, the tobacco is suite B, it's two different entrances, and it's just, it's a whole separate business.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I guess my question is, is it a deal, you know, is it a deal breaker for you, or is it a difficult hardship that I'm missing if you don't have the drive-through? I mean, what is your anticip, I don't even know if I want to ask this question, but I'm trying to figure out the percentage of what you anticipate non-tobacco-related products would be for a smoke shop in terms of what to expect, the number of traffic, the number of people. I'm not trying to get numbers in terms of revenue, but I'm trying to understand, you've got all these parking spaces for people to park, which would be to come on-site. I don't really see the benefit of causing anyone to potentially queue, not that I think that's going to be an issue with the, what's being sold. I just don't know if it's worth doing and having the village have to now worry about enforcement.
It's a legitimate question, like, what's the purpose of the drive-through given the limited items that can be sold? But again, that's not on the agenda tonight. They already have approval for a drive-through use. So all that's up is, do you want to allow tobacco sales, vape sales at this location?
So when we, when they got the bakery approved, the bakery use was actually permitted by right, as a restaurant or bakery. At that meeting, previous to when, when we, we had previous commissioners here.
Sure.
The request was A for the cannabis and B for the, the drive-through for the bakery. When we do the drive-through request, it's kind of a blanket request. So imagine you have a drive-through, one of the good examples I usually use is, there's a Freddy's, there was a Freddy's on the south side of town on 63rd Street next to Raising Cane's. When we did a larger development there, we pre-approved a drive-through regardless of the actual business that was moving in, because we designed the site. The site was designed for a drive-through ultimately, regardless of if it was going to be a Starbucks, McDonald's, Dunkin', whatever, the drive-through was always going to be allowed. In this case, the drive-through special use carries with the property. So the use we're talking about is tobacco. I know it's interrelated because it's in the same unit, but technically, they already received approval for the drive-through at their previous request.
Just we're on the same page. If the state allowed it, we wouldn't even be having this meeting. They could sell cannabis or...
No, you would, we would still have the meeting because the tobacco retail is a special use.
So we can't approve the retail license itself without the underlying drive-through with it? That can't be split here?
The request from the petitioner is not to remove the drive-through use, so based on their request tonight, they don't want to remove the drive-through use.
But the commission could split that?
I would leave that up to the attorney. I'm not certain.
I'm just, I'm struggling where we're happy to...
You can impose a reasonable special condition on a special use, and if you're concerned that there's a permitted drive-through use at this location and don't want them selling nicotine products through the drive-through window for fear of underage sales, et cetera, I think that's a reasonable condition to impose. It appears that the state may prohibit that already, so it may not even be necessary, but if you want to make that recommendation to the village board, you can do that.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. I'll maybe wait till everyone goes through.
Sure. Commissioner Thomas?
Understood.
Got it.
Blah, blah, blah.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay. When you first came through and with the, with the drive-through and when we were talking about exiting on the east side, and we had people from the neighborhood did not want the right-hand exit to go into the neighborhood and wanted it just to go left towards Ogden. It's still there going right, correct?
Does it?
I can interject. The engineer, when he does his site inspections for final engineering, there is a, and that was just over there recently, there is still a deterrent to turn right, so it's have an open drive-in, so you can turn either way. There is a slight edge to it to try to deter people from going that way.
It's not much of one.
Correct. It's not as much as probably the commission preferred, but for the engineering purposes, we didn't have a safe lane there.
John, isn't there a sign that says no right turn?
There is a sign. Correct. I'm both concerned.
And I know that the sign was put up prior to them finishing the right-of-way improvements that have that deterrent, but technically, there is, there is one similar to the...
But there is a sign there.
There is a sign. Correct.
I have nothing else. Okay. Commissioner Peterson?
That, that was one of my questions, because when I granted an approval, it was that you couldn't turn right into the neighborhood, not necessarily because of the school, but because of the traffic and that. Okay, so the new thing, how will people know, like, what you're selling to drive-through? Is there going to be like a menu board outside?
On the window, we'll have non-tobacco items are to be sold out of the window. So we would have a sign on the window, something nice that shows that no tobacco, no tobacco products to be, to be sold outside of this drive-through. If you need anything, you would come into the store.
So do you have a thing like behind the building, like where you talk to somebody, or do you just go to the drive-through and they open the window?
Yeah, it would go up to the drive-through.
Okay. Now, do either one of these places sell like cigarettes? Is this...
No, so the dispensary can't, cannot sell any kind of tobacco items.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't say items, but any kind of tobacco, like vapes or cigarettes or, but the dispensary can sell like glass or lighter and all that stuff, but we were just so limited on space, we figured that next door would, can use the, you know, the product, the sale of lighters and glass and other stuff, so.
Okay. So really, you can't go buy a pack of cigarettes there?
No.
And just out of curiosity, is there an age limit, like to buy pipes and papers? And I honestly, I don't know. I don't know if it's a state thing or...
No, there's no, there's, I'm talking for paper?
Yeah, the rolling papers and the pipes.
Yeah, 21 and older, I'm sorry. For, for glass, I got to go back and check. Is it 21? I'm sorry, 21, it is 21 and older.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, I think that, that's all I have. My main concern was turning right into the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, so far, I think that's been addressed, and it's been good so far with the signage that shows...
Well, you haven't been, the last couple of months, you can't drive down that street anyway because it's been under construction.
Construction, that's right.
But still, it's just a busy, busy neighborhood with the school and the library and every, all the cut-through traffic. I think it's a good fit to be next, you know, and in one building, so I don't really have any major issues with it.
Thank you, Jill.
Let me show my ignorance. What's the minimum age to, for tobacco products, cigarettes?
21 plus.
21 years old?
Yeah. Just like the dispensary, 21.
I was buying cigarettes when I was 13 and knew it wasn't getting carded.
When they're a dollar a carton, probably.
Regarding the, you know, it used to be a restaurant in there, and you have a commercial kitchen in that east side in Suite A. Are you going to, are you keeping those stoves? Are they still in place?
You know, they were just, they were just like, they weren't the big industrial stoves, so those will be taken out.
They will be taken out.
We'll use the back for storage and stuff. Yeah. It's a, it's a small space, it's 700 square feet, it's not really big.
And will you use the same employees back and forth between Suite B and Suite A?
No. All separate, all different employees. Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think the drive-through issue regarding tobacco, you know, sales, it wouldn't make any difference if a 19-year-old tried to do it at a drive-through or walking into the place, so I really don't see that as a, as a concern. Did you, you wanted to add something here, John?
The only thing that I would propose is if, if it were legal at the state level, would this village still be able to prohibit it at our level, and if so, would you still want to do it? So effectively, are we saying that no tobacco gets sold regardless of what happens to the state? My, honestly, this one isn't effective as much because my bigger concern was if, I got misled kind of with the cannabis flower, right? My thought was like, when I do local prosecution, you can't have it open in the car. And so most people, if you're going through the drive-through, it's probably convenience, it's almost like they're getting set up in a way, but that's not the case here. So my, my concerns are a lot more toned down. I guess my viewpoint is, following a little bit with what Commissioner Peterson said, is how are they going to know that they can't get the tobacco products from the drive-through? You know, you're going to be seeing Starbucks, Lit Smokes, you're going to go through the drive-through, and then they're going to say, "We only sell t-shirts or things there."
Could you be more specific in your signage?
Yeah, I mean, if we see, we'll have, we'll have a sign, a signage on the window, nice signage, no tobacco products to be sold out of the window. If I have to add signage outside, you know, on the drive-through somewhere as well, we can always add that as well.
Yeah, no, and I get it. Mine's just for... Yeah, no, and I get it. Mine's just from the commission. It's just like, I don't want to set him, you know, I don't want him setting himself up to have a problem. It's just, hey, you can't sell it from there if it doesn't. I just want to make sure, either way, I'm okay with it, with what's going on here. State law covers it. It's just whether or not, if the law were to change, are they still allowed to sell in the drive-through? Is really the only question I was pondering.
The, may I add just one thing from my newer commissioners? Typically with, when we approve as an ordinance with most tobacco and vape retail uses, we place a handful of conditions on it. A lot of it is really the signage because those usually, they usually break a lot of our signage rules with LED lighting and things like that. Um, so I'm sure when we do the, the ordinance, if the commission feels it's necessary and the village board feels it's necessary, we can place that, a condition on the drive-through as our village attorney mentioned.
Yeah, there's a measure of local control that the village can exercise over tobacco sales, including licensing. So in addition to getting special use, as you know, you have to go see Mr. Mulhern and talk about tobacco license.
That's right.
And there's the ability to impose conditions through the licensing, but also through zoning. So it's, it's reasonable. And I think prohibiting tobacco sales through a drive-through, which again, I think it's already prohibited by state law, but is reasonable in case the law were to change.
Sure. I guess that, that would be the motion I would make on there is approval and just add the restriction that it's remains non-tobacco. If state law changes and he wants to come make the change, let's see what's going on at that location at that time at that place. But keep it open. I mean, open it up. Might as well see. I mean, we can't figure out the right turn yet because it's been under construction and we can't figure out kind of any traffic because he's not open yet because he's running into other, you know, regulatory issues. So let's let him do it. We'll follow what the law is now because we're making our decision based on what the tobacco rules are now. And if something changes, then they come back. My suggestion, or my.
Okay, further discussion?
Just one comment.
Michael?
It's 1,035 feet, property line, property line, right?
No, it's measured from the outside of the building to the property line.
Is that also the building of the school too?
No, to their property line. So it's from the outside of the building as, as a crow flies to their property line is how we measure. And it's from the unit where the use is taking place.
Just.
It looks almost like five feet.
Yeah. Got it.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, the chair would entertain a motion to approve under PZC 0172025, this request from JARE Enterprises, uh, Doing Businesses Lit Smokes and WL Property Acquisitions for the property at 101 West Ogden, special use permit request for a tobacco and vape retail store in the B2 General Business District. So, sir?
Thomas?
Motion to approve, Thomas. Do I have a second? Second, Peterson. Discussion, further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. Well, there you have it, sir.
Thank you guys.
You'll be notified by, by staff when you be scheduled to.
Notified now. December 11th is the village board agenda with the license.
Thanks, thanks, God. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, under new business, uh, first, we have public hearing, PZC 0202025, a request from Matthew and Karen, is it Robare?
Robert.
Robert, for the property at 225 South Williams for the following. A zoning ordinance variance to the maximum lot coverage in the R3 single-unit residential district for a new deck.
Hi, thanks for having us.
Good evening.
My name's Karen. This is Matt, uh, my husband. Um, and as mentioned, we are here for, um, a lot coverage variance for a deck that we're looking to put in for the backyard. Um, we have been residents here since 2021, but we did purchase the property that we're currently in, in October of 2024. Um, and so what we're really looking to do when we purchase the house, we have a deck in the front and a deck in the back, both at the end of their lives. We always intended to replace the back deck, which is small and really not useful. It's just to kind of bridge the gap between the house down to the, um, ground. Um, and so we always intended to replace that with some brick pavers that are in front of it with a deck that spanned the length of the house, um, just for more recreational use. So in current coverage, it's about 90 square feet with the current, um, deck with the brick pavers. And the proposed deck that we are looking to put in is around 225 square feet. So our current lot coverage, I believe, is 39.9%. I believe when our house was built, it was grandfathered into the 40% coverage. We, that's how we purchased it. Um, and so we are looking to increase the percentage up to 41.6% with a Trex deck that would be just through the back of the, um, the length of the house. Our lot is a little unique in that we are one of the only ones on our block with a driveway off an alley. So the driveway is taking up a significant portion of the backyard. So a deck is really kind of our only option to have recreational use, um, back there. So that is what we are here to chat about. So let us know any questions, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I'm going to clarify again. Uh, we are now using the amended zoning ordinance. So this is chapter 95 from August. Um, this is the first variance request in the, the amended zoning ordinance. Um, the reason I note that is some of the variance standards were adjusted with amendments. Um, so make sure to familiarize, familiarize yourself at the end of the staff report with those conditions. It's also shown in the findings of fact that were provided to you. Um, so we've had a few, uh, lock guard variances of recently, um, so we're not going to go into too much detail on how we regulate, um, lock coverage. Uh, this particular property, um, is on the edge of town on Williams, uh, neighboring Downers Grove. The property is owned R3, single-unit residential district. The property includes a single-unit detached home, uh, with a significant driveway in the, in the back, in the rear of the building and the garage. If you look at the Platte survey, that's on the screen, the garage is a side-loading garage. So there's a turn on the, um, driveway to enter to the garage, which is somewhat unique to typically what we see throughout the village, um, especially when there's an alleyway involved. Um, additionally, the property is 60 feet by 140 feet, uh, with a total square footage of 8,400. Um, this is part of the, the Westmont Historic Subdivision, um, that was approved in 1920s, originally with the village. Um, on Williams Street, most of those properties are 8,400 square feet. The rest of that subdivision has, uh, lot areas of 90, or 9,000 square feet. Um, so on Williams Street, we have, um, because of how close it is to Downers Grove, we have smaller lots on that street. Uh, the property and all around the property is, is owned R3 as well, other than bordering Downers Grove, which is R4 residential district, which, which has different lock coverage standards in their municipality compared to ours. The proposal that, um, the petitioners requesting is for 225.1 square foot, uh, deck in the rear. Currently, there's an 87.57 square foot wood landing and brick walkway in the back to connect to the driveway. As the petitioner noted, it's somewhat in, in, at the end of its life. Um, the property, has historically been at 40% lock coverage. Um, our village engineer did indicate that they are permitted to go up to 40% on this property, not just grandfathered in, but um, is, is what they're permitted at because they're not located in a low depressional area or a sub-basin that has a low depressional area. Um, the existing lock coverage is at 39.9%. The proposed new construction would increase that to 41.6%. We always round up with these requests, so it'd be a 42% lock coverage request, just in cases, case of error at staff level. Um, so there's some wiggle of room, uh, when we're doing some measurements. So that's an increase of about 137 square feet, um, from the existing lock coverage on the property. Uh, additionally, this, uh, proposal, um, you'll note that in the staff report or as an attachment to staff report, the engineer provided, um, their recommendation. There is no recommendation to install any, uh, dry well, any flood mitigation measures. Um, it was indicated that the, there would be no adverse impacts to drainage with this proposal. That's due to, um, two reasons. One that I mentioned, it's not located in one of those LDAs or sub-basin areas. And B, that, um, decks for engineering purposes are pervious, um, not impervious. Uh, so water can get through the deck and trickle into the soil underneath. Last thing I will mention is that, uh, I'm happy to go through the new special, or the new variance standards if the commission would like me to because they are new. Um, otherwise I am open to questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the commission? Seeing none. Let's go back to the commissioners. John, would you like to start?
Yeah, Scott, just one question. Where the deck presently, or what's presently there? Is it pervious or impervious underneath the deck? Basically, is it sitting on soil?
Um, I would defer to.
And it's going to continue sitting on soil in the future?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, no paving or anything.
No, so it's all going. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't pavers and then you're going to expand the pavers.
Along the house is currently grass, so.
And that's going to stay, okay. That's fine. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Due to what the engineer, his, his, um, his report and, and it's, and where it's located, that helps also because a lot of people get into the wrong, where their house is depends on where the house is at. And, uh, so, um, I support you on, on this one. Because of location. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I don't totally agree with all of the findings of fact, but I have no problem with, with the duck and the little bit over the lot coverage. I know I, when the weather's nice, I live outside and I, I know it, it's nice to have. And I just had a new Trex deck put in and, in the front, and I love it.
Okay.
It's beautiful, so.
Buying as much time with the front as we can, so.
So, yeah, no, no problems.
Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, the, the village's coverage limitations are, are too restrictive, uh, as I've mentioned before. I also don't think that decks should be counted at all towards coverage, just as it seems like the engineer had, had accounted for the fact that water goes through. So, yeah, I'm, I, I want you to be able to enjoy your backyard. Like, uh, so, so, yeah, I'm, I, I don't have any, um, any problems with it myself.
I'm in agreement as well. It, it's not in a sub-basin area and, and you're using pervious decking. And therefore, is there any more discussion, questions? Then Chair would entertain a motion to approve. Under zero, uh, public hearing, PZC 0202025, this request, uh, from Matthew and Karen Robert, Robert, for the property 225 South Williams for a zoning ordinance variance to the maximum lot coverage in the R3 single-unit residential district for a deck.
Motion, Simpson?
Motion to approve, Simpson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Lynn? Discussion? See, done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
You'll be notified when.
We'll be here.
Yes, also at the December 11th village board meeting.
We are, so thank you guys.
Certainly. Okay, next item under a new business is a, a preliminary concept plan presentation, an informal discussion only. This means it's not a public hearing. The public is not asked whether will they be, uh, allowed to come forward. This is discussion only. Uh, the request is from 33 Naperville, uh, West Naperville LLC regarding the properties at 246 North Lincoln and 33 West Naperville Road, uh, to present this draft concept plan for a proposed map amendment from B2 General Business District to R5 General Residential District and potential optional, uh, development plan for the redevelopment of two existing non-conforming residential buildings. This is a preliminary internal and informal, uh, discussion for the Planning and Zoning Commission to provide feedback, uh, prior to a required public hearing, uh, to be held at a future date. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Kevin Dros. Uh, I own, uh, 246 Lincoln and 33 West Naperville. Um, when I bought the property, they came together. They were as one, uh, basically sold as one, one sale. Uh, it's kind of unique being that 246 Lincoln was a standalone, almost like its own house, that was converted to an apartment at some point over the years. Uh, 33 West Naperville was an existing apartment building, uh, that was, that the, I believe the owner in the house had built somewhere along the line. We already completed a full renovation of 33 West Naperville, um, that we did this year, uh, earlier this year. It was a complete gut remodel, started over. I own a construction company. I can't sleep at night if it's not perfect. So, uh, we started all over and made the building from what was, I thought, an eyesore into something very nice. Um, now I have 246 Lincoln. Uh, both 33 Naperville and 246 Lincoln are currently, as you said, uh, zoned in a business, uh, district. I'm looking to convert both of them to R5. Um, and then for 246 Lincoln, I have the parking on the existing property for an additional five spaces, 10 being for 33 Naperville. 33 is a 10-unit building. Uh, and then I'd like to convert 246 into five units. I have five units available for 246. Uh, it would be in addition on what is there existing. So we'd basically start all over. Uh, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't, it's not a, a new construction, but it would be close. It would be a, a remodel on it. So, thank you.
Staff?
Yeah. Um, so the, as the chair already mentioned, this is a discussion. So we've had one of these already with, um, the amended zoning ordinance. So this is a time for you as the commission to give feedback to what might be a future petitioner on the property. I'm going to go through a few items because we've held a pre-application meeting with the petitioner prior, um, to go over some of the perceived entitlements that might need to take place for the property. Um, I don't know if you have a site plan on there if you can just hit the arrow. On the right side.
What's that?
Yeah, that one. You had it.
Oh. Oh, I see.
Yeah, there you go. So you can get to one that has a site plan. And hold on a second. Um, so this right here is, uh, the Lincoln property. So this is at the corner. Uh, the proposal, um, as I already mentioned, is to have an addition on this property, on this building. Currently, the zoning for B2 General Business does not allow for multi-family. So both of these properties are technically non-conforming as it relates to use of the property. Um, historically, um, we've, these properties were owned by, um, the Bella Reeves at a time, um, if you've heard that name before. The properties were, um, uh, have historically been used for multi-unit buildings. Um, sometimes we haven't known exactly how many units are in some of the buildings prior. But the, um, I want to say Kevin, Kevin has updated the building on Naperville, uh, within the non-conforming rules, uh, which allow you to basically renovate parts of the exterior and the interior, but you can't, um, expand the use because it's not conforming to the property. So that's why the existing building was able to be renovated up to a degree. Um, on this other property that's shown here with the expansion, because it's non-conforming use, the only way they can expand the use, uh, with this addition is to have the property rezoned to a district that allows the use. Um, so then. So the anticipated entitlements for this property are somewhat twofold. So there's, A, there's some replating that would need to take place because of how the property and lots are laid out right now, make them separate properties entirely, and to fix some of the lot lines that go through buildings and the driveways, or the parking lots. There would need to be a rezoning, or map amendment, as it was called in the code, for A, the rezoning from B2 to the R5 district. And then we would likely need a comprehensive plan map amendment, because we have a comprehensive plan that says this property should be business, but our sub-area plan says it should be transitional residential, so they're not in agreement. And to be safe, we will, if they move forward, we would take the request with the comprehensive map update. The third request would be for a site and landscape plan approval, which we've seen here before. And because we haven't received formal plans yet on what they're proposing, there might be some variances needed to, for example, the existing building setbacks on the property. The reason a lot of times that we get variance requests for existing buildings is because it's difficult for insurance companies to insure a property without really high premiums, because in our code, if a property's not conforming, either the use or the structure's not conforming, they can't be built exactly how they were before. So we get a lot of calls in the office for, from assessors, when they're assessing a property, asking if the use is allowed, and if the building is conforming. We get them through our zoning verification letters, if you've ever heard of those. So generally, those would be what we anticipate the entitlements to be, there could be more, there could be less, once we actually start reviewing a project. Obviously, this is the first step. But tonight's just to give feedback from the petitioner on if this is something that he should move forward with, if you have any recommendations on what can be done better. Nothing's binding, so he can disregard the recommendations given as well, if it's not feasible from him. And then a public hearing would need to be held at a later time to go through with the entitlements. And I will give it back to the Chair, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public like to address the commission on this?
No public.
Oh, that's, but of course, I apologize, I take that back. Commissioners, this is just a discussion, so I'm not going to call on individuals. Let's, anyone who wants to speak up, ask questions, comments?
So you're planning on leaving the existing building and tearing down the illegal garage shed thing, and?
Expanding on it, correct.
Expanding it. I know on, on the building you just remodeled, which looks great, let me tell you, that's my neighborhood, and I, I'm so impressed.
Thank you.
I mean, it's looked the same before, like, as long as I can remember, I've lived here my whole life, so.
Sure.
Is this building, obviously, when you, when you build the other half, and that, that it'll all be uniform, right?
Correct.
And it won't necessarily be matching the building?
To the west?
The apartment building?
No, it will not match. The layout of that building is completely different, it's, it's just, it'll be as close. The basic idea is the, sorry, go to the next picture. So the, they have the pictures. The existing building there, we kind of mirrored it, the, the house, we kind of mirrored it and left a portion of the garage in the middle that would be used for vestibule, mailroom, entrance, stairs up to the second floor, access to the second floor. The 10-story at 33 Naperville, they have that California walkout balcony across the entire front of, of the upper floor, this would be all internal, but the construction quality would be the same. I intend on using similar colors, the walnut accents that we have throughout 33, I plan on incorporating that somehow into 246. It's just one was built far before the other one, I don't have it, you know, it's not going to look like it's from a different planet, sitting out there in front of, if that makes sense.
I know the, the bigger apartment building has individual entrances, but this one will just have a main entrance, and then?
Hallway.
And if it's two stories, is it required to have an elevator, or no?
I am not certified to answer that question.
Okay.
It'd be a good question when we go through pre-application with the fire department.
Oh, okay. No, I, I think it'll be great, I never liked the house. But I think it'll be great, and the rezoning makes sense. So I really don't, don't have an issue with it, as long as you're not going to ask for, you know, like, a million different variances. I mean, I understand a few for the, for the new project, but, no, I think, I think it'll be great in that area, it'll fit in, and, and personally, I don't have any, and that is my neighborhood, so I don't have any issues with it at all.
Thank you, yeah, I don't want to ask for any variances. I'm just trying to make do with what I have, I, and it's, given the size of the lot, what we're having here to work with, just to make something out of it that's not an oddball eyesore, this is kind of what the architect that I'm working with and I have kind of come up with to date, so, any input?
Yeah, I like it, I have no.
Not being an architect, looking to Michael for some assistance here, because I, when I look, when I look at your sketches here, I see four units, I see you, I see you going up and out, but I, I see two up and two down, and you're saying five, so there's five units there. I'm just not figuring out by looking at the sketches how, where they are.
I think it's deceiving because of the size, it's definitely room for five there, I don't know how he hasn't twisted. We didn't finalize the exact floor plan, but this was kind of the run-in on how the outside elevations were going to look. We had enough room in the original house to do two two-bedroom units upstairs and downstairs without any renovations, so doing five one-bedroom units, it would, it would still fit. And I believe there was, in the addition, it would be required to have a basement, so I believe there would be one more garden level unit in, on that side.
Well, it seems to me, I mean, the rezoning from B2 to R5 makes all the sense in the world, and, and looking forward for that area, and the south side of, of Naperville, or, yeah, road there, but, and, and I'm always happy to see owners putting money into their properties and improving them in, in Westmont, so I, I don't see any, any downs on this at this point. Gentlemen, what do you, have any opinions?
Maybe, my, my only thought is, do you know where there might be balconies?
Balconies on the, on the new build? There is no balconies.
No, like, on, so for, for the one on, yeah, on Lincoln Street, like this rendering that you're showing, is there, is there any, like, like, where, a lot of times apartment buildings will have like a balcony or somewhere so people could grill, I'm just wondering, does it, is that provided, or no?
No, generally, I don't, I mean, I don't really have, the only balconies, for example, at 33 Naperville is one common balcony that goes all the way around the front. At this point, I haven't, again, we're in the pre-phases of it, if there's some room to possibly add, it would only be two decks off the back, where we had two wooden decks, similar to, I'd say most of the apartments on 63rd and between Cass and Fairview, they all have that kind of same layout, where they have the, the deck on the upper floor, and then the, the concrete patio for the lower. I know I built a lot of the decks over there. So, yeah, it's, if we did anything, it would kind of be on that. The picture's a little, I know with the, with the preliminary side of it, it is only two units, so you have one unit on, on the building on the, on the right, and one build, a unit on the building on the left for the second floor. So if we did decide to do a balcony, it would only have to be two.
Yeah, and, but, like, from, like, I, I like your rendering, and I, I like the, like, the approach and everything, the, I just, I just wonder, like, will, sometimes, and I'm sure your, your architect will take care of it, sometimes, like, decks or balconies, that could, could look a bit tacky sometimes, especially if they're facing, like, a busy street like Naperville, but I, I'm, I'm just, I, I trust that you guys are aware of that, maybe, or that, and that Joe, if you're, if you're providing balconies, that, like, it'd be, it'd be kind of, it might, might be kind of nicer on the, on the backside, but I'm, I'm not, we're not, this isn't an appearance committee, so really, I should just keep my mouth shut, I guess.
No, you're fine, like I said, anything that we get in front of now, I'm, I'm okay, open to suggestions. As, as of now, I have no intentions on adding balconies. I own several properties around, and none of them have balconies or decks on them, it's just another maintenance nightmare that people generally don't take care of, to be honest. It is nice to have, we kind of, we might put maybe a common paver area outside, we have that courtyard in between the two buildings, so maybe like a small paver area where people can set patio furniture or something out there, would might be in line, but a plan for each individual unit having their own balcony, I, I don't have any intention for that at the moment.
If I may add, just because you mentioned balconies, so we do have an open space requirement, open space, and I don't have the definition, definition in front of me, but generally, open space is, can be called usable open space, basically, it can be used for activities for the residents. Normally, in a TOD-oriented development, such as Quincy Station over here, you'd see it in the balcony, obviously, because they don't have enough space. Usually with these smaller multifamily complexes, they can achieve it on-site with either a turfed area or a communal paver area. And with an existing building, we'd probably, and I'd have to double-check, but I think we'd only require it for the new dwellings, not for all the existing ones, if that makes sense.
Sorry, it, it will be a requirement for the new?
It'd be, the, the requirement would be, it's 250 per unit, but I think we'd only require it for any new units that are added on, not for all of the existing ones, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not against balconies, because I think it'd be nice for people to have space to grill, but, I mean, that, it was just my thought, it was just, sometimes you see, some apartment buildings will have wooden balconies hanging out on the main street, and, and sometimes they can look rough over time, but I'm, I'm talking about parts of the design that are not even there, so I, but, I, I think, I'm, I'm in agreement, I don't have any issues with doing the, the zoning district change from, from business to our, like, to R5 or whatever it is. Maybe, my, my only thought is, I wondered if you could take it, does R5 have less of a front, or a setback? I wonder if you can make even your units bigger, by bringing them closer to Lincoln Street, but I, yeah, it's hard to tell on this site plan.
Make the building itself bigger?
Right, maybe you're not interested, I don't know, I, I was just, that was just one, one thing that crossed my mind, is sometimes people try to maximize the, the footprint that they get on a lot, and, and looking at here, and if it's an R5 zoning district, I would almost, would think that you could get closer to the setbacks, I don't know what the setbacks are off the top of my head, but it almost looks like you're, you're being conservative with the, the size of the?
We were, absolutely.
Yeah, so is it, maybe it's just out of your own interest that you didn't want to expand further, or?
No, the bigger the better, for me, right? It's, I don't mind making it bigger and nicer, it was just, this was kind of our safe play on, this is kind of what we're toying with doing. So, you know, again, a serious architect costs money, this was just to make sure everybody was on board. We had already invested a large amount of money in a plan to try to renovate what we had with the existing 246 Lincoln, and it was kicked out immediately because of the zoning, so I said, okay, if we're going to go through all of the steps of rezoning and everything involved with that, let's do an addition on the building and really make it nice. So again, this is kind of the start of what I, what I plan on doing with it. It's, it's a good, good, good representation, minor tweaks, size, a little bigger, a little wider, maybe a deck or two, and we'll be right there.
Yeah, no worries, I don't have any issues, I'm just, sure, just thinking it through, so.
I appreciate it.
Only item I'm concerned about, it's just parking, if guests come, they go there, is the parking allowed on the west side of Lincoln?
Uh, I don't off the top of my head, I know that the existing parking that's there could accommodate each dwelling unit.
Right.
None, it's right at that line.
Right.
Anything, it doesn't have any guest parking available at this time. My understanding is through your leases, you have sometimes implemented, was it parking? Minimum parking, like, one parking space per year?
Yeah, we're very strict, it's, it is actually written in the lease, it's one car per tenant. The only way that we would break that is if, we've had, again, I have a building that has 30 spaces across 20, 20 units, and a lot of the spaces are vacant, a lot of people take the train, public transportation, especially being where this building is, that's one of the first questions we get asked, is how, how quick is it to get to the train?
Very fast.
That's kind of the, the appeal, a lot of the, you know, people who are going to live there maybe don't all own a car, but we, for me, there's nothing worse than having an overoccupied, I, I don't want a mess of a parking lot, we patrol it, there's cameras on it, anybody that's not supposed to be there is immediately towed, we're very, very strict on it. And there is parking on one side of the street on Lincoln, not overnight, but there is parking there.
I don't think there's parking on the west side of Lincoln, I think on the east side.
East side, correct, yeah.
Yeah, the only, and again, I'm not against, I, I follow completely with it.
Yeah.
My thought is just, the one thing, maybe I'd want to see when you do come to phases, kind of, everyone does package delivery, right? I mean, if you drive down my neighborhood, everyone's got a brown box, Amazon stopping, someone's showing up. If you're going to do, if the plan is to do five units here and then 10 units left, I'm thinking when they stop, where's that truck stop, where's it go? That's probably the only question I would have, otherwise, I think it's great, I think your layout, your renderings look great, I think it's going to be a benefit for Westmont, I've got no problem in making any amendments to the comprehensive plan, I think this is what we want to encourage, I think it's a right, it is a transitional area, because this is almost right where it cuts off even what we're talking about on the new plan, or the new district, so, you know, if anything, you might be setting the trend for what happens now in the future, so, I think it's great.
Outstanding.
Okay, Mr. Dros, I hope this has been helpful.
It's a great start, yeah, so my next step is to finish the drawings, so.
Yep, I'll contact you at a later time for the formal pre-application.
I appreciate everybody's time, thank you so much.
Certainly.
Thank you.
And our next item under new business is preliminary concept plan presentation, and another informal discussion only, a request from Torque Suites and Ryan Companies, the owner regarding Lot 2 of the Rockwell Second Resubdivision, commonly known as 701 Oakmont Lane in Westmont. The purpose of the request is to present a draft concept plan for a proposed planned unit development, PUD, for the redevelopment of an existing parking lot into a commercial condominium building for the storage and serving of automobiles. This is a preliminary internal slash informal discussion for the Planning and Zoning Commission to provide feedback prior to a required public hearing at a future date. Good evening, sir.
Great, thank you. Brad Albrakton with Torque Suites, thanks for your time tonight, look forward to talking to you about our potential development on Oakmont Lane. Just a little background, Torque is part of a larger commercial developer, we're based out of Ohio, it's my colleague Christopher Rosie, we do various asset classes across Midwest and Southeast, and we created this concept, or brand, if you will, called Torque Suites about three years ago. So what are these? These are individual units, they're condominiums, so they're commercial condominiums, can't live in them, they're not residential. Our typical floor plan is 30 feet wide, 40 feet deep, so 1,200 square feet on the floor, 18-foot ceilings, and then there's about a 400-square-foot mezzanine on top. You can see this picture here in the background, and on the screen is an actual unit that we developed in Cincinnati, Ohio. That's a typical layout of what folks put in there, it's, yes, it's for car storage, but there are various uses as well, you cannot work on cars in there, some people put two cars on a lift like you see, some people may put a car in there, some people don't even put cars in there at all, use it for personal space, kind of a home office, mixed-use space that people are using. Again, there's, upstairs is kind of the entertainment work area, then you have the ground floor for cars and other various uses. These are some renderings of our properties that we've, they're either under construction or we have built. You know, one thing I think we do really well is fit in with the surrounding use, so, just going through these, the, on our left, that's Project in Birmingham, Alabama, it's more of an industrial use area, so that's kind of the design we had there. The middle rendering is in a suburb called Blue Ash of Cincinnati, Ohio, it's a fairly similar area. It's a fairly similar area to Westmont, actually. And this fits in well with the office and industrial park that that sits in. A unique look, I guess, is this one on the right with the brick facade that is developed within a residential area with homes selling up to $2 million. So we want to do a good job of fitting into that area. It's an older, older community, older neighborhood of, that's also in Cincinnati. So we wanted to fit in with that, too, which we had also planned to do with the site on Oakmont Lane. We drove the site today and took pictures of all the surrounding buildings. You know, there's a lot of gray, dark gray, dark, lighter gray in the color schemes there, so we'd want to do a good job of fitting in with that area, too. Again, these are some elevations. One project that I didn't have up here earlier was in Indianapolis, it's in Fishers, Indiana, a northeastern suburb of Indianapolis. Then the bottom one is our, our project that's within the residential neighborhood of Cincinnati. Yeah, one thing I'll mention is how we pick these sites. We try to find underutilized sites, so the one site is in a corner of this residential neighborhood that actually abuts a railroad. We didn't think $2 million homes would sell a budding a railroad, and so we thought the highest and best use would be this. And, you know, going back to this original concept, it's a unique use, right? But we found that there's high demand for it in all the areas we've developed in. We think Westmont's a great area for it. Not only is it satisfying to the people that occupy these units and own these units, but it creates a bunch of community aspects of it. People engage charities on site. You know, one thing I think that's unique about most of our sites and Westmont is you guys have the cruising nights on Thursday nights, which is a very popular event. I think that's really cool. Coincidentally, we have a lot of similar overlap with car clubs and car events that are hosted in the neighborhoods that we occupy, so I thought that was a nice coincidence. This is our proposed site plan. We're planning for 34 units. This site, if you're familiar with, is across from the Ryan Companies and GT Building on Oakmont Lane. The left side of this parking lot is used by the office building across the street. It helps meet their parking ratios that are required in their, in their leases with their tenants. This side of the parking lot has not been repaved. It's been vacant for quite some time, I don't know the exact timeframe, and it's not included in the parking requirements for the lease. So it's actually blocked off now and roped off, so it's not being used. Just to kind of walk through the site plan a little bit. Like I said, there's 34 units, all these units currently are the same size, so 1,200 square feet on the floor, on the ground floor. And then what you see there, if you're wondering what those darker gray objects are off the back of the units, those are outdoor spaces, outdoor living areas. And so people utilize that, you know, as patios, they put patio furniture out there, then may put a TV, but it's just an extension of their unit, kind of like we were talking about earlier. People like outdoor space, and it just gives them another use for their, their unit. That entrance is the existing entrance to this parking lot, so we plan to keep that. One thing that we want to be mindful of is providing a nice, healthy landscape buffer along Oakmont Lane. That's important, not only, I think, for the surrounding area, to make it look nice, but also just our, our unit owners, to make sure it's well landscaped. The property is secured, fully secured by a fence. We put a six-foot-high aluminum fence in. It's gated at the entryway, so you have to have a key code access to get in. We do have guest parking, that's something that we discussed earlier and prior to this meeting. So we did provide guest parking on this site. We addressed some of the fire code concerns with the turnaround on a typical fire engine. We worked with our civil engineer to make sure that that was addressed in our current site layout. I think the one thing that's really important, right? So a lot of residents, surrounding businesses have concerns about like, what's going to go on? How do you know people aren't going to work on cars? How do you know that people aren't going to stay here overnight? At every one of our properties, we form an owners' association. It's not a homeowner's association, because these aren't homes, but it looks and feels and functions just like a owners' association. So you have a board that governs this. You know, our attorneys have put together 30 pages worth of a declaration and bylaws to address all the concerns. And really, this started, our Blue Ash project in Cincinnati, the one that I was comparing to Westmont, was our first project that we did. And there's a pretty high-end residential community that butts our project. And so we worked with those residents to really craft the declaration and bylaws to address some of their concerns. So, you know, you can't rev your engines of your cars if you're driving in at certain hours. There's garage doors, insulated garage doors on each of these units. You can't have them open at night and early in the morning. Can't stay there overnight, as I mentioned earlier. You can't park outside overnight for a certain amount of time. And then we have, you know, although I mentioned, people use these for business uses, if you will. It's really just individuals, entrepreneurs, people that quote-unquote "work from home", they may use this as their work-from-home space. There's no consumer-facing businesses, you're not allowed to have signage outside, flags outside, those types of things that would really, in our mind, bring down the value of the proposed use of the property and not be in the best interest of the owners. This is just a little bit more about Torque and Nire. We own roughly 6 million square feet around the Midwest. Like I said, we plan a lot of different asset classes and are excited about not only, you know, bringing Torque here, but other municipalities really feel like there's a demand. I will mention, there is a somewhat similar concept here in Illinois that you may be familiar with. It's up in Naperville, it's called Iron Gate. So it's about, probably about a 30-minute drive from where we sit now. Fairly similar concept overall. I like to say our design's a little different, and they have a decent amount of commercial use, especially on the exterior of their property, but it is technically a car condominium development. Probably a little more car-centric than what we're aiming to target, but it's a fairly similar concept. That's all I had, but happy to answer any questions?
People aren't allowed to sleep, though, right?
Oh, no, no.
How do you monitor that with so many units?
I mean, there's a board at the HOA, and I'm sure, or the owners' association, and if people start breaking the rules, it's just like breaking a rule in a high-end residential condo. You get reprimanded, and it's just not approved use. We haven't had any issues with that at our properties, and, you know, there are a good amount of these around the country, and some are zoned for residential. You can, you know, stay in a, in a unit, but ours are not.
These are very much like aircraft hangars at airports, where private owners keep their cars and their airplanes, and it's same-sized units, and they fix them up and they man caves, get away from their wives, and lots of affairs. At these things are great, I wish I could afford one. The outdoor spaces on your north and south, you know, they just cost more than the internal ones that don't have that extra pad.
They do, yeah.
The, you mentioned in your literature there a clubhouse. Could you expand on that?
Sure, it's really, so our clubhouse...
There on the east central. Yeah.
Right there. That would be our clubhouse. It's really just a unit, same, same dimensions as a unit. We'll put like a pool table, maybe more of like a bar, high-top tables in there. And it functions like a, you know, like a residential, like a larger multifamily complex. It has a clubhouse where folks can rent it out for... What we're seeing honestly the most of is charity events. Folks like host, a lot of these members and owners are part of charities, and they host various charity events there.
When, when you've sold all 34 units and you have an HOA, what is your role versus their role, once you sell them, you're out of there?
Yep.
And...
Yeah, we turn the board over.
Got it.
Have you ever, in the covenants, had the covenants, well, first of all, they're recorded against title of the property, have they ever run in favor of the municipality for enforcement purposes if certain things aren't maintained?
No, we have not. I don't believe so. We didn't do that in, no, we didn't do it in Birmingham either.
John, you might know this, how does, how does a place like that, that is considered a business or a condo? How do they, like, regulate alcohol on the premises? Is it just like...
It's private property.
It is, okay.
They can't do alcohol sales unless they get a, for example, let's say there's a charity event and they want to get a temporary liquor license, and someone comes in who already holds a state-of-Illinois liquor license and is doing a one-time event where they're selling alcohol, or people have to buy tickets and alcohol is given away, but it's considered a sale because it's part of the ticket price, it has to be licensed through the village, and the village could say no. But they otherwise would not be allowed to sell alcohol at this location. But if someone wants to bring a bottle into their space, the village doesn't...
Well, I researched a lot of these places, and the one in Naperville, and, I mean, they have like gigantic bars in all the units and, you know, I just didn't know what the legality is of...
Well, you have some exercise, some measure of control over it. I'm aware of some clubs in industrial-type build-outs where, you know, wasn't being used, and people have rented it out for a charity, and it's really turned into a kind of a gathering place for people on a bar inside. But there's no alcohol sales, it's just people bring their own stuff.
Okay.
And I don't think there's restrictions on that. But I'll check with the liquor commissioner.
Chair, if I can go through just a little bit of entitlements?
Sure, please.
Again, for my newer commissioners. I don't recall if you were here when the subdivision was approved for this property at 701 Oakmont. This property, this part of that property that was subdivided off, as was mentioned, fell into disrepair with the parking lot, it's blocked off right now. They came in, a Ryan Company came in and subdivided the property to sell off this piece. The existing parking lot is for Ryan Company and their leaseholders in the building, and it's required to be kept as a parking lot moving forward in regard to the lease. And then they have a site plan approval that's attached to their previous approvals for the plat. The plat has not yet been recorded for the property. It's in the process of being recorded with our engineer right now. The only reason I mention that is because right now we're calling it 701 Oakmont. It will have a new address at some point when it goes through the public hearing process. If they move forward with the process, or just keep that in mind, they might see it pop up on an agenda if they move forward under a different address.
Oh.
So the proposal that's being shown would have to be a, what we call planned unit development. There's two reasons that would have to be processed as a planned unit development. A, there's multiple buildings being proposed on a property. In our code, the only way you can allow that is through a PUD or planned unit development process, or if you're in institutional use, you could be allowed, but this is not institutional use. The second reason is the underlying use of the property is pretty unique. It doesn't fit neatly in our code. There's kind of a lot of variables to it, as Brad went through already, with storage of cars. There's also this, this gathering place for meetings and entrepreneurs and that type of thing. Doesn't fit neatly in our code. So the underlying use is not called out in our code. The closest is a storage facility, self-storage facility, which doesn't neatly fit. The storage facility use is not permitted in the underlying district, but with a PUD, that can be waived as a deviation. And in PUDs, we put a very narrow scope on the uses that are allowed. So if they went through this process, we'd have to narrowly focus on what uses are allowed and what uses are prohibited. So if, keep that in mind about uses of being prohibited, that is very common for a PUD. Additionally, PUDs, we place more restrictions, restrictions on, we have the power to place more restrictions on them. If there's measures like X amount of spaces shouldn't be used for a specific purpose, or it can only be used for, only the clubhouse can be used for larger gatherings, that type of thing. We've also seen PUDs used for restrictions on uses or activities that take place from this property. So if somebody was doing donuts in the street because they have a car over there, that could be listed in the PUD as a disturbance or something like that, that needs to be verified. And if, usually what we see is three amount of, if there's up to three disturbances or restrictions broken, they'd have to come in and basically state their case to the village board about why they're not meeting it and how to fix it. And then the village board would have the ability to take away their, their powers there, or their use there. We never had that happen. The comprehensive plan, like I said, the zoning, the zoning district is OR Office Research District, primarily for offices along this corridor. Research has kind of gone away in recent, not recent, but decades past. Ryan Company actually had one of those research properties across the street. They had a very large project there, and made into one of their offices and rented out as offices. We've seen that offices have not really bounced back on the market. Ryan Company doesn't believe that there's a market for a new office building here. So they've looked at other uses, and this is one of the uses that had interest on the property. The underlying comprehensive plan does label this as light industrial/business park. So the use is normally, this type of use would normally be geared towards an industrial or manufacturing district, but because the comprehensive plan, it's an industrial park or office district, it's not out of line of the comprehensive plan for this use to take place here. Two other things to note on this property generally is you have the high school to the south and the water tower to the south of this property. There's a pretty large landscaped area there that divides the properties. And then to the north is obviously Office Complex. And then to the north of those Office Complex are Maze Lake and Tarn Lakes Residential Properties. And then beyond that is Oakbrook, the village of Oakbrook in Trinity Lakes subdivision. So like, like I said, with PUDs, we have a lot more leeway to require certain conditions be met in placing restrictions on the property. So keep that in mind as, you know, Brad listed the HOA, or not HOA, but their regulations and covenants. A lot of those can be implemented into the ordinance for the PUD if they move forward.
Mr. Albrecht, could you, I'm aware of what aircraft hangars go for, area around here, and it's, it's significant. And could you give us an idea of what your units through Ohio and Indiana, what owners have arranged, a price range that they've paid?
Yeah, it's 350,000.
The reason I want to bring this up is, you know, it's not a bunch of noise-making drunken, these are wealthy, wealthy people who purchase these things, and they have expensive vehicles they take care of. It's not a...
We found that a majority of our owners either live or work slash own a business within 10 minutes.
I know when I was researching the ones in Naperville, the units they had for sale were closer to 700,000.
Yeah, the resale is usually significant. If, you know, say these sell out and one goes up for sale...
They're empty units, from what I gathered from the website. It was ones that they were, you know, they were...
New ones? I didn't know they were still building.
But yours will not?
None, no, none of our units are, our highest-priced unit, a larger unit in a good location is still under 500,000.
And then they also have to pay an HOA fee?
Yeah, it's 150, $200 a month. Here it'll probably be closer to 200 with the snow removal.
And I don't claim to understand this concept. It's a little bizarre to me, but, you know, I have been researching it and, you know, I'm sure you guys don't want to be wasting your money by building all this and, you know, so I am trying to get, it's just a foreign.
Yeah, it's been very surprising, like, the, the amount of different folks that have bought these. I mean, we have a lot of couples and maybe the, the wife focuses on art. She's really in art, so it's very well decorated with artwork and maybe there's a nice car in there, but it's, you know, and they'll hang out there as a couple. Like I said, a lot of folks, it's primarily an office forum. It's not car storage. So it's, it, and that was a surprise to us, the amount of, you know, variety of people and uses that we, we have in these.
If I can just add, we are seeing a lot more of these type of concepts pop up at other villages' meetings. I can, I know in Barrington, they have some in their downtown that were proposed. I don't know if they were ever approved, but they were proposed there. The ones in Naperville, it looks like they're trying to expand as well. And we have some other ones, mostly up north near the border of Wisconsin, that have started to do it with some of their old industrial park areas, so.
Got it. Anything else?
We got a great spot. You got all these dealerships going from Hinsdale all the way down to Downers, so I think you got a good spot. I'm familiar with it. I've been to some of what I would assume is your competition then as well. I think it's a great model. The only concern that I have on all of this that I'll be upfront about, I, the only thing I wish was different was that you were retrofitting an existing vacant building in this area, right? Because ideally, like, that would be perfect. My only concern is if, for whatever reason in the future, and this really doesn't affect you given your model, right, you leave once it's turned over. I want to make sure, though, that we are clear going forward. I don't want this to be used as a back door down the road, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, to say, oh, well, look, we've got to put a mechanic, this is perfect for a mechanic's garage. I'm not saying that's how it is, but the way these look, this could be a good argument down in the future saying, hey, and I want to try to keep it as much as possible away from that industrial. This was OR storage. I wasn't sure, is storage allowed by, right, like storage units?
Not in the Office Research District, not by right. But like I said, this is somewhat of a hybrid use with the office slash storage. Does not fit well into our categories.
The only other item I could think of that this would make sense is a storage if they're gone. I'm assuming it. I like it. I've got no issues with that. I'm just thinking after the fact. If we had to see something, that to me is where it would go, not, hey, let's bring in, you know, a mechanic there or something like that.
HOA bylaws, HOA bylaws would prevent that commercial uses and.
Well, if the HOA stays intact, but what if the HOA and everyone sells to another person?
Well, I think the approvals, it's a great point, but I think the approvals from the village, including a PUD agreement, are going to specify the uses that are allowed. Even if those uses aren't specifically listed in this, for this zoning district, and it's going to prohibit other uses.
Sure.
So while it may be amenable in the future to mechanic shop or a storage facility, just based on its design, they'd have to come in for approvals and the village can say, nope, we don't want to allow that kind of use.
I just want to make sure in the beginning, we're all saying like, hey, we're aware, so that in 20 years and I'd say, well, this was a hardship. It's like, well, but you bought it knowing specifically that was there. Not you again down the road, because that area I'm very familiar with. I think it's great. It's, you've got the high school, the, the office, the business. It's a great spot and I've seen, I've seen what your other, you know, what competitors look like and it's a great spot. And just to answer, it's, I don't want to say in a bad way because it's not meant to cast in a bad light. If you're spending three hundred and fifty K on a parking spot and you probably have a car worth over that, plus you're going to stock your bar with whatever to impress your guests. It's not about selling. It's, I've got every type of bourbon you could want. Which one do you want? So I'm with you. I see it. You're like, this is probably bigger than most restaurant bars, but it's the idea of whatever you want, it's here. I get it.
Thank you for presenting. And then, sorry.
Go, go, you're good.
Couple dots. One, is it a precast planks? Like, is there a basement spot beneath them? Or no?
No.
No? Okay. And then you mentioned people use it as offices, as you said for charities?
That's two separate things, but yeah, some people may, you know, if, for example, if you would work, your job allows you to work from home, you know, maybe their home isn't conducive to work from home, and so they'll use this as their kind of extended office. And then the other potential use, and this isn't often, you know, like, we're both involved in charities and, you know, if there's a event, an annual event, you may host a fundraiser in your unit, small amount of people, to raise money for a charity.
Okay, that was, let me see. And when you mentioned offices, I'm guessing, I mean, you don't have any controllers because it's already sold by that point, but I then thought employees with it. And then I thought, I'm just looking at you, for like the guest parking, it looks like you only have about seven or eight parking spots.
Yeah, there's eight, there's eight spaces there. So what we do is each individual gets a key card, right? And it's access only through the front gate. So, I mean, you'd have to get pretty crafty to hand your two key cards, basically, per unit to employees to come in and out. You know, if I'm an owner and part of the owner's association and there's employees going in and out, I'll nip that pretty quickly. I don't think that's, you know, going to be, that's not allowed, one, and two, it's not going to be looked upon favorably with the other owners. And then just to address, you know, we typically see most people visit their unit two to three times a week, so not too, too often. So it's pretty low intensity use. And then if they, if they do come, they'll usually park their car in their unit, right? And if they have a guest, typically they just park outside of that, that unit.
Side of the door?
Yeah. So we don't, we don't have guest parking, really, on, our Birmingham project, I guess, has a little bit because there's excess land, but our, our two other projects that have been built do not have guest parking, that, you know, don't anticipate that being an issue.
Just, it was, when you mentioned charities, like, if just one of them had a charity, then I would imagine that's got to be at least a dozen cars or so as guests, but.
Yeah, and there's, you know, there's, the drive aisles here are 45 feet. You can technically park, park in the middle.
If you park in the middle, then you're, you're blocking someone from backing out, right?
Uh, not with 45 feet. People will be able to get in and out pretty easily.
Our, our general requirement for our codes are 24 feet for drive aisles. This, I don't believe would need the extra square footage because the heights of them don't need the extra tall fire truck that needs to stabilize itself, so.
I'm guessing like for the zoning and whatnot, is there, is there, like, are they short of the guest parking? Or no?
With planned unit developments, we kind of go with what the developer needs and what they perceive to need. Certainly, the commission or village board can require more or less in the approvals. Typically, it's whatever's shown on the site plan for these. It's difficult with these unique uses to determine what the parking needs are, especially if there's a garage attached to all of them. For planning unit development, we would just list out that a minimum of the guest parking has to be maintained per this approved site plan.
And there's no, there's no street parking on Oakmont, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is it, so that's my, my take on the parking. I think it might need to be increased to the, but I still have a hunch and I don't really know your business, so. But on another topic, it's like, how's it, do you guys do decent, like, lighting inside, like, for, like, street, kind of like your private street parking or street lighting, that is?
We have out, we have lighting on each unit on the outside. We don't have light poles or anything like that, if that's what you're.
Is it all on like a timer or so? Like, or is it on?
Uh, no, they're on 24/7, right? Photocell.
Pardon? Yeah, they're just always on. Okay. Okay. And, yeah, I think someone mentioned about disturbances and like, but that's all after you guys sell the units. So like, someone mentioned about, like, if there's disturbance, like, people doing wheelies in the parking lot or something.
Yeah, so generally, so planned unit developments are also technically a special use. When we have special uses, a lot of times there's language attached to the special use. If they're not operating within the special use requirements, usually it's up to three times. That can be verified by like code enforcement or something like that from complaints. They can be brought in to be questioned on it from, I don't know if it's this commission or the village board. I can't remember off the top of my head, but there's a process for that. Correct?
Correct.
Correct.
The 10-foot setback on the west side, there's still room enough for a fire truck to go, fire trucks to go around the two, the center buildings?
So we had our, our civil engineer, you can see this here, do a study on that.
And I don't.
It just looks narrow on that.
The fire department has done, hasn't reviewed any plans yet. We just held a pre-application meeting, provided, I believe, the requirements. So they'll have to verify this when they submit an application. Like I said, with the concept plans and discussions, there's always minor tweaks that happen, sometimes major tweaks that happen for the sites, so.
I think it's a good business plan and, and that piece of property right there has been sitting empty for years and.
It's a good spot.
Yeah, I think it's a great fit.
And I'm sorry if you address this, because people are doing work on cars, are there any protections taken by way of oil drip pans, triple grease traps, things like that?
To clarify, they're not allowed to work on their cars.
Oh, I thought someone said.
No.
You, maybe the chairman said people like to come in and work on their cars. I thought.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that's a restriction that we have.
That's in the HOA.
Within our owner's association bylaws.
Okay. Good to know.
Can I keep my helicopter in there too?
Yeah, put it on the roof.
And fire departments have generally not had a problem with these sort of uses. Like, I don't know if gasoline's, someone brings in gas, gasoline to store, I assume they're sprinkled?
They are, they are sprinkled, yes. To answer your question, no, but if it's a resident, if it was a residential use, that's where the gasoline combustible, you know, that's when it would come into play, but because folks are not sleeping in here, that is not an issue. We have not had other issues really at all with fire department or fire code.
I don't have, no, I don't have a problem with the project. Like I said, it's just kind of foreign to me, but I would not have a problem going forward with, with the.
I like the homeowners association. Take care of your own, you know, because there's no one else going to be around to, to do that.
Sure. And we hire, I did mention this earlier, but we hire professional management companies to manage the owner's association.
And if the association is not doing what they're supposed to, then they would.
They enforce, you know, they're the ones, they're the outside party to enforce the rules. I should have mentioned that earlier.
I would assume they take care of like the common areas and all of that.
Yep, so they get a management fee and it'd just be like a management company at a, either a rental or a residential condo building.
But after all the units are sold and you've walked away.
That, that, that manager company would still stay in place unless they get.
So they're paid by the HOA?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We.
I thought.
It's a third party. We're not affiliated. We don't, we're not in that business.
I will mention that the village doesn't really get involved with HOAs too often. We, a lot of times you run into issues with, like I mentioned, common area spaces that need to be maintained per an approved plan, like landscaping generally, when, when a lot of these rental companies come in and buy, buy a large project and the portfolio turns over, they don't realize that there's restrictions from a site plan perspective. So when we adopt any plans, it runs with the land, so they have to maintain their landscaping regardless of who the owner is, that type of stuff.
How do you market something like this when you come into the, to the area? I mean.
That's, that's the million dollar question. It really, so we, we try to get the word out, right? And, you know, we would love to be like a sponsor of cruising nights, right? Like, that's a perfect way for us to get involved in the community, get the word out. A lot of it's word of mouth. We will hire a salesperson. Sometimes that's someone with more of a residential twist. Sometimes that's somebody with more of a commercial twist. It really just depends on the person and, you know, making sure that they're plugged in with the right people, whether that's car people or more of the entrepreneurs, business owners within the surrounding area. So it varies. But it really starts as kind of like a grassroots marketing campaign, if you will.
And if you, if you buy one of these and then they're all sold and the HOA, and then you want to sell it, you just do it like a regular real estate transaction?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Well, anybody else have anything? It's been an interesting chat.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And we'll be in touch for any next steps you would like to take.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Certainly. Okay, next agenda item is open forum. Anyone here who would like to address the, the commission on anything that wasn't on tonight's agenda? Sir? Seeing no one, we'll move on to miscellaneous. Anybody have any, anything? We're.
I have.
Okay.
Please do your anti-sexual harassment training. Due date's December 15th. If you do it through your, if you do, if you do it through your business already, we just need certification sent to our HR department so they can put it on the record. Otherwise, you'll have to watch all the videos that were sent. And there's, I believe, an additional form regardless of if you do it through your business or your employer that needs to be signed. So if you can't access, please let me or Jamie Hoffman know.
Yeah.
And there will be a meeting in December.
Yes, so there will be a meeting on December 10th.
Oh, there will be?
There will be. We do have at least one or two items, village-initiated items for that meeting. If you are unable to make, because I know we're in the holiday season, please let us know as soon as you can if you're unable to attend that meeting. We're, we have a vacancy on the commission, so we need to make sure there's a quorum present. That's all I have.
That's all. I know it's taken the village a long time to find us another member. We'll keep prodding them. Okay, if there's nothing else, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Yep, go ahead, Michael.
Like, with the zone, with all the zoning changes, I mentioned this to Scott, I think, last time, if there's like zoning changes that were made that I still don't agree with, can I just, like, can I do administrative adjustments on my own, but then I'd have to pay for it, right?
Usually our direction is from village board when we do amendments. We usually provide them to our community development committee as we realize there's an issue. From the staff, we raise it at the committee and they tell us to move forward or not. So for example, right now, we have stormwater detentions of discussion. So at the last community development committee, Public Works provided a bunch of numbers to the committee to look at changes. One of those changes could be in the future, changes to lot coverage, for example, depending on how those numbers work out. So usually it's driven at the staff level for adjustments, but you can always email staff regarding those changes. We can always look into it. Just can't guarantee that we'll pursue changes. I will mention, after the six-month period, I believe it's going to be around March or April, from when we adopted the amended zoning ordinance, we're going to, like we talked about in the meetings, we're going to do a, an audit, basically, at the staff level to make adjustments. We've already have a few amendments that need to be made. So there might be a list of amendments for that meeting as well, just to clarify language for the most part.
And Michael, if you're interested, the community development committee meets every Thursday at 4:30? Before the, before the village board meeting, so it might be something you could try to tune into.
Maybe.
Yeah, the, the community development committee meets quarterly.
Oh, just quarterly.
Quarterly. Other committees meet more often. We're, we're a quarterly committee. We meet in here. Those aren't available, the minutes aren't available till the next quarter, the draft minutes, and it's not a recorded meeting. So you have to be in person to kind of understand what's going on. And that's a committee of the whole. So that's all village board members.
Jill, you had something?
Um, I wanted to ask if there was a meeting next month. Scott answers.
Okay, yeah. Next meeting would be December 10th, Wednesday night at 6 o'clock. I'm, I wasn't sure I would want to start this early, but it's working out very well, I think.
Love it.
I, sorry, I have one more thing. Everybody. Everybody in their package should have received the new schedule for the 2026 year for the meetings, so if you can mark your calendars for them. They don't normally change unless there's a holiday, there's not usually a Wednesday holiday, so.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion Simpson?
Motion Simpson.
Second.
Second, Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.